Our work session this evening and it ran just a couple of minutes late, so.
Okay, Zach's on there, too.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 28, 2020 City Council Meeting for the City of McMinnville. I'm going to turn it over to our recorder Claudia to do a roll call.
Counselor Drapkin?
Remy, you're on mute.
Aye, I'm sorry. It just took me a long time to get to the unmute button. Sometimes that happens. I said aye like 15 times, though. I'm all muted.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Yep.
Counselor Stassen?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Here.
Council President Minkie?
Yes, I'm here.
And Mayor Hill?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Claudia. Our first item this evening is a proclamation, and this is Historic Preservation Month, and so I'll call on our senior planner Chuck Darnell. Chuck, if you're on the line?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor and councilors. So this proclamation that's before you tonight is for Historic Preservation Month. This is a month that's celebrated every year annually throughout the nation for historic preservation, and we do so here in McMinnville every year during the month of May. As I'm sure you're all aware, we have a very rich history here, a lot of important historic resources and buildings that we protect through our Historic Preservation Program. So Historic Preservation Month is something that helps us get the word out about historic preservation. So a couple of things we'll be doing this month are continuing, doing some social media updates and posts, sharing some tidbits and history of some important buildings in McMinnville. I'd encourage anybody, if you're out on a walk appropriate a social distance and have a photo you want to take or something like that and send to me, we can take up, take photos and stories from anyone, and we can do some posts on those on our McMinnville Matters social media accounts throughout the month. Another activity we'll be doing is Historic Preservation Awards, something that we started a couple of years ago. We'll be getting some information out here this week, sharing some information about how people could nominate somebody for a Historic Preservation Award. It's either somebody that's active in historic preservation or some property owner or business that's completed a historic preservation project in the past couple of years. We gave out these awards a couple of years ago. It was a great way for the council and the city to acknowledge and present awards to people that have done some great work on their historic buildings. So those are a couple of things that you'll see from us over the next month, and we hope to bring those Historic Preservation Awards back to a council meeting in May and have the council and the mayor present those to the award recipients.
Thank you, Chuck, and I do have a proclamation that I will read and sign, but I would also like to just thank staff for the good job that they do in facilitating the historic downtown and our historic district, and also to thank our Historic Landmark Committee that working really hard and consistently meeting and doing the things they need to do. I've had an opportunity to be to a couple of their meetings, and I'm just, I'm very, I feel their passion and the things that they're doing. We also had, a number of us had an opportunity to go down to one of our bigger remodel of a historic property down at the Taylor Dale, the old Taylor Dale building, and I was just amazed at the intent, what they're trying to do to keep that historic nature there. So with that being said, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation, a nonprofit dedicated to protecting America's historic buildings, landscape, and neighborhoods, established an annual celebration of the historic preservation across the country. And whereas this celebration known as National Historic Month was first established and observed by the National Trust for Historic Preservation in 1973, and whereas the National Historic Preservation Month is now observed in the month of May every year throughout the country, and whereas the City of McMinnville has a rich history as the primary social and economic center of the Yamhill County region, and whereas the McMinnville Downtown Historic District, the economic center of our city focused on Third Street, is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and whereas the City of McMinnville promotes, protects its historic buildings and sites throughout a locally adopted historic resource inventory managed by the Historic Landmarks Committee, which includes numerous buildings and sites dating back as far as 1853, and whereas the protection of our historic resources enhance the economic vitality of our community, beautifies all built environments, and instills in our community members of a sense of pride in the historic importance of the City of McMinnville. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Historic Preservation Month. In the City of McMinnville, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Historic Preservation Month and support efforts to protect our valued historic resources throughout the city. In witness thereof, I have therefore set my hand and caused the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this the 28th day of April 2020. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor, City of McMinnville. And so we'll get that to you, Chuck. I signed that, I went into the office and signed that today, so we'll get that over to you in a timely manner. Thank you. That now takes us to item number three, which are comments from the citizens, and any individual is invited to provide comments, and any comments that are limited to speaking on topics other than matters in litigation of a quasi judicial land use matter or matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person, and will spend no more than 30 minutes. If you would like to speak, please raise the hand feature in Zoom to request to speak. Once it's your turn, we will announce your name, or announce your name, unmute your mic, and you may also send a chat directly to city recorder, our city recorder, and she will announce you. So I open it up for anyone that would like to address the council, and Claudia, I'll turn this over to you. And I have the timer here, so I'll take care of the timing.
It doesn't look like we have anyone that has addressed, wanted to submit a public comment at the moment.
Thank you, Claudia. Okay, that takes us to item number four tonight, which are presentations, and we have a presentation by Ramsey McPhillips, President of Zero Waste McMinnville, and we've been holding off a presentation to the council till this time, and this is in association with Earth Day. Ramsey wrote an essay, and he would like to add that to the record of the council and speak with us. So Ramsey, I'll turn the time over to you.
This is Claudia again. Ramsey actually emailed us to let us know that he is not going to be doing a presentation at the moment. He's holding off on doing that presentation, and he did send out that essay that I will submit to the record for everyone to read on Earth Day.
Okay, good. And I have a copy of that. I don't know if the council does, but I have had an opportunity to read that. Thank you, Claudia. That takes us to advice and information this evening, and so reports from the council on committee assignments and board assignments, and then we'll have an opportunity to hear from department heads. So I'm just going to look at the top of my screen, and Remy, you are on mute, but I'm going to ask you to go first, okay?
Hey, I did a better job at getting it off mute this first time around. So I kind of touched on this before, but we've been working on a number of things with affordable housing. We've been recently evaluating our department head and staff, along with Council President Minkie and myself, have been reviewing our action plan in regards to the influences of COVID-19 to see what would be valid, not valid, moving forward with, if we needed to rethink it and bring anything back to council. And we are able to move forward. There are a number of projects that are in very beginning stages that we're not really ready to report on. I think as most of the councils probably were, there's a possibility that the governor will call a special session, in which case there's a chance that House Bill 4001 will come back. As a city, we did send in a letter of recommendation to move forward with House Bill 4001. There's also some, some conversations still about what's happening in regards to House Bill 2001. And let's see, what else? So I reported a little bit what was happening in terms of housing for unhoused folks earlier. I also spoke with Dave Hagerberg this week, who updated me on the mission, and they are operating all of their facilities. They are, of course, maintaining social distancing requirements, and they feel very lucky in some way that they hadn't filled the rate in which they thought they would because they're now able to be employing all of those facilities. They also have relaxed because of this emergency their clean and sober requirements. If you would all like to tune into the county commission meeting on Thursday morning, they will be reviewing their, the potential dollars that the county would be contributing to the hoteling model that I mentioned earlier in the Level 10 meeting, that the city and other cities in the county are working together on. As I mentioned, Level 10, but also for this record, we are using a hoteling model for safeguarding houseless residents. YCAP is running that. They already have first 10 families in shelter. And our food bank is still in need of a lot of support, and if you have connections, especially with anybody that has access to food, you know, by the pallet, we are looking for massive food donations to YCAP, to our food bank. Those are especially looking for prepared, non-perishable foods, especially if there's protein type foods like that, like nuts and dried meats. And then, this is not a committee assignment, but a personal interest, I am also communicating with a lot of business owners and talking about long-term planning for our downtown and how we preserve having a downtown. That's all, that's all I got for now. I think.
Thank you, Remy. Let's run over to Wendy. I have her next.
The MURAC is meeting next Wednesday, so no updates at this time.
Thank you. Sal?
Sorry, Mayor, you caught me with my mouth full. Yeah, no report since we haven't had any committee meetings since last week.
Thank you. Zach?
Nothing of note to report in between meetings. As the sitter or honor of the Historic Landmark Committee, I'd like to also tip my hat to Charles Darnell. He does outstanding work, and with him in the committee, we've got a good head on our shoulders for looking out for historic properties that we've identified as important in our city.
Thank you, Zach. Adam?
Airport Commission isn't going to meet May due to lack of agenda items, so get that fuel tank, fuel tank move forward that we authorized. YCOM will have our budget meeting, and we canceled that April budget meeting, so we should have that wrapped up hopefully with their first meeting here in a couple of weeks in May. And so looking forward to joint meetings to school district. I know this kind of pushed that back a little bit, but with the ability to Zoom, I would hope it would make it easier for a joint meeting and schedules to align if city staff could reach back out on that. That would be tremendous with us being already through another school year since we wrapped up our last advisory committee. So time is of the essence to create an after-school program.
Thank you, Adam. Kelly?
Just, the budget day, May 18th is the budget committee meeting. We, Jeff and Scott and I discussed with Jennifer and Claudia about the budget committee members maybe not having the technology, and so Scott and Claudia are stepping up to make sure that they will have technology to be able to be part of the budget meeting in the Zoom session. And then you've all been offered an opportunity to get a budget via flash drive or whatever, so look forward to that. I just, you know, you might want to take a look at last year's budget and remember what was going on then. I've been in a visit McMinnville meeting and landscape review. Remy covered the affordable housing. Visit McMinnville, mostly kind of a focus on ways to help businesses. Shortly after that, then I went right into the economic meeting where we're dealing with, you know, ways that we can actually do it, and business people were sitting there and actually brainstorming together about how, and things that could be done during this period of time to help them respond better and to also obtain money. So interesting meetings this last couple of weeks.
Thank you, Kelly. From my perspective, I'll just kind of run down just kind of the gamut. Again, have been to all of the LOC conference calls on Friday. I think one of the better meetings that I go to, LOC brings the leadership and gives us direct information from the governor's office, from emergency management, from the Oregon Health Organization. If you're able to attend those, it's well worth, or at least pick it up on their podcast. I think it'll give you a real sense of where, where the state is going. We are having county meetings twice a week. I've had an opportunity, things have started picking back up statewide. MWAC, which is the Midlamet Valley Transportation Act, we met last month. I'm on a number of LOC committees, on the Policy Committee for Transportation and Energy and Environment, and we've started meeting. We're meeting on a weekly basis, and these are three-hour meetings each as we're trying to set the legislative direction for LOC in the upcoming sessions coming up. And then the Oregon Mayor's Association and LOC Conference, we're working on those. We've had meetings over the last two days on trying to set the agenda. We still are moving forward with creating those two, those two conferences. The Mayor's is earlier, so we'll know by May 1st whether we're going to move forward. LOC is going to have a virtual component of it, so those that can call in and be a part of what's going on. But they're looking at, since that's later in October, September, October, they're thinking that we may be able to meet. So that's my report. I think I'll try to hit our department heads that are here. Kylie, if you'd like to go first?
Sure. Not a lot of updates. I just wanted to let you all know that we do have some jobs that are open right now, so this is a good platform to advertise that. We're posting a property and evidence specialist at the police department, as well as a wastewater lab tech and our city attorney position, in addition to a handful of park and rec positions, in anticipating that we'll reopen some of our programs in the summer. So our recruitments are still chugging along, even though we're all at home.
Thank you, Kylie. I'll go over to Heather next.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I just wanted to follow up on the conversation regarding emergency business assistance. The stable table's been meeting two to three times a week to look at different programs. We've chased a lot of them and have come up with barriers on most of them. What we're trying to do is figure out how to leverage limited funds to really bring bigger dollars into the community so we can make some meaningful impact. We are encouraging businesses to, the best, the best program for businesses right now is the PPP program, which opened up grants again on Monday. So we're doing everything we can to work with smaller businesses so they can get through that system and access some funds, and we did have a lot of success for that in McMinnville for the, with the first round with some of the larger businesses, but we really want to help the smaller ones get through, navigate that process. We've been working with the Oregon Community Foundation that has a small business stabilization fund. They're working with community development financial institutions to deploy those monies, and then those monies are being used as loans in different communities. We had a long discussion with Craft 3 about participating with them. They've elected to, right now, limit their participation only to those communities where they have offices. So we will have a discussion on Thursday with another group called NISO, which got some of those funds, to see if they would be willing to partner with McMinnville so we can bring those into our community as well. We've looked at what a lot of other communities are doing for their local grants, and they're using two resources that we don't really have access to. One is business licensing fees to offer small grant programs locally, and the other is interest income generated off of urban renewal funds. There is some, there is some chatter about whether that is actually in the gray area of urban renewal spending or in the black and white area, but regardless, we have only, because we're a small urban renewal agency, we've only generated $15,000 of interest in our program over the last four or five years, so there isn't a lot of funds there to deploy. But we will have some discussion at our MURAC meeting next week about it, to see if maybe that's something we can use to help businesses access things like the PPP program. And then we are working with the state. They just came out with a, Business Oregon just came out with a community development block grant funding program for emergency business assistance associated with COVID. We are planning to submit an application for that. There is, those are funds are available to communities that aren't entitlement communities, which is McMinnville. And so we are working with the Downtown Association on putting a project together and an application for those funds, which would need to go through the city. Two other projects we've worked on is, just launched last week, was the YourMcMinnville.com. If you're not familiar with it, it is a online resource for all businesses that are open right now and how they're open. So if they're offering curbside service or takeout or limited hours, this is an opportunity for residents to go on to this online resource and find out if the business they want to support is open right now and how they can support them. And it's also an opportunity for businesses to get that information out the door. We partnered with Buildable, a local firm, to put that together. They volunteered to do that, and Visic McMinnville really put a lot of time and effort into helping prop that up. The last thing that's occurred is Visic McMinnville just launched a program called Our Roots Run Deep, and it's really to encourage two things. One, for us to recognize our local community and how locally we can all help each other. And then also, you know, after we get out of this emergency response phase and we're in a recovery phase, we can talk about how important tradition and local businesses are in McMinnville as a tourism marketing arm as well. It's a great program. They've offered it up for everyone to use to play off of it. They have, they invested in the branding part of it with colors and fonts and things of that nature, and they are sharing that with everyone so that we can all build off of that campaign and really make it a community mantra for ourselves in terms of both the initial emergency assistance and then our recovery and resiliency, resiliency phase as well. So the last pieces, as a group, we've decided that outside of PPP, which is the emergency funds, we want to start working with businesses to help them reopen. The governor just sent out her draft guidelines for a lot of businesses today. I forward that to you as a city council group tonight. And it has a lot of discussion in it about social distancing requirements, which may end up being some costs associated with that with businesses to retrofit their internal storefronts to accommodate it. So we want to work with different granting agencies to bring money into the community, help businesses do that. The McMinnville Downtown Association Executive Director's been working hard on that over the past two weeks, and MEDP has been talking to manufacturers about that as well. And then we're going to continue to try to go for funds for smaller grants to help businesses as emergency assistance over the next couple of months and larger low interest, low interest term loans. So that's what's in the works. We're working as hard as we can. We are, it's kind of unique because we're sitting in that middle phase where we sit for a lot of other programs where we're competing with much larger cities for access to funds, and the larger cities have cobbled them up, and then we're not really considered a small rural community because we're 34,000, so we haven't been able to participate in other programs for that demographic. But hopefully that provides you with some, some history on what we've been talking about over the last two weeks and some of the things we're working on moving forward.
Thank you, Heather, for that great report. I know the councilors were very much interested in what we were doing, so I think you've given a good sense of where we're at. Let's move over to Jennifer.
Hi. Oh. Hello, everybody. So in finance, we've been focused on putting together the budget materials and trying to do the best we can to estimate what the impacts are at this point of the COVID-19 response, and you all will be getting a proposed budget shortly. And then on the muni court side, court staff, along with the judge and our city prosecutor, we've been working through with the assistance of IS, what, what a court might look like, given the social distancing requirements and such. So that's where our focus has been the last couple of weeks.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Not much for you this evening, other than just a quick note that majority of your wastewater, streets, park maintenance, and engineering staff have been at work and continue to be at work on a daily basis as essential workers, keeping your infrastructure running smoothly. So we're not all working from home. Other than that, a couple of agenda items for you a little bit later.
Thank you, Mike. Let's move over to Scott. Okay. Do we have Matt? Is Matt at the Civic Center? Chief, do you have a report?
Well, why not? Much like, much like Mr. Bisit said, PD is still all intact. We are full operational. We're out and about. I'll give a quick update. I sent some stuff out to our executive team. I know there's questions about what call volumes are like, and the call volumes remain the same with respect to our calls for service. There are some interesting numbers that we're getting with respect to domestic violence. Those are up comparatively to the months previous, as well as our burglaries and things of those natures. They're significantly up. We're addressing that through some stuff that I'm not going to go into right now, but we are actively working some investigations. That way, property crime's up as well. So unfortunately, our line of work, we remain as busy as ever. So I'll answer questions if you got anything.
Anything for Matt?
Thank you.
Don't, don't say anything. Rich, are you still on the line?
I sure am, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
You haven't had enough of me yet? Mr. Mayor and councilors, the only thing that we're, just to keep you updated on, is we're tracking a variety of CARES Act money that are coming down in a variety of different ways, whether it's through FEMA, through health and ways, whether it's through FEMA, through Health and Human Services. They've also established now a grant through the FIRE Act program. And we're trying to leverage the best return for the city to recoup our costs so that we, some of them are 100% cost recovery, some of them are 85, some of them are 75. And we're working with finance to make sure that we're tracking appropriately for FEMA reimbursements, but we're also looking at trying to, we might not use FEMA when we can get an 85% match instead of a 75% match through some of the grants that are available through the process. So we'll be working on that grant process also, to include some of our purchases that we've already made, which is unusual but allowed this year, in addition to the other grant and that we discussed earlier, and, and tracking the HHS Medicare monies that have come our way, as well as opportunities at getting reimbursement for uninsured COVID patients in the event we start working with some of those.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have Jenny on the line?
Susan and Jenny are on the line.
Okay. Claudia, do you have anything for us? And again, do we have any other department heads? I think I've tried to be as complete.
No other department heads and no update for me. Thank you.
Okay. Walt, do you have anything for the group?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. One additional item, this is the time of year that our robust downtown farmer's market typically launches. We've been working with the affected departments and the Downtown Association. It looks like we will have a different kind of market initially. The MDA has proposed a pre-order, no-contact, drive-through market. So we are working with them to figure out the right route. Right now, the concept looks like folks would have access to the vendors online in advance of the market. They would need to preorder their items by Wednesday afternoon. Vendors would come to City Hall between 10:00 and 1:00 in the, during the day and build the boxes for folks, and then people would come do their pickup between 2:00 and 6:00 PM. So we think that's the way it's going to work. It looks like we have a traffic plan that will work, and the goal is to start the market on May 7th, which is next week, and run it in that form for the full month of May. And then as we get into the summer, we'll see what kind of changes can be made to have it look a little bit more like a traditional farmer's market. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jeff. That takes us to item number six on, on the agenda today, and that is our consent agenda. We have four items, and I'd ask if any counselor would request to have any item moved from the consent agenda and heard at its regular place on the regular agenda? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Remy. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed by saying nay? The consent agenda passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to item number seven, new business, and it's an authorization for the city manager to sign the collective bargaining agreement between the City of McMinnville and the McMinnville Police Department. And so I'll call on Kylie to present this to us.
Thank you. I would encourage you to take a look at the staff report in your packet that describes the background of discussion on our police contract with McMinnville Police Association. We arrived at an agreement on April 20th. The wage increase for the represented officers and represented employees in the MPA is going to be 4% effective July 1 of 2019. So it did take us a while to get there, but I'm really pleased that we got there, and we came to an agreement together with avoiding a costly arbitration for both parties. So that's a really big positive. The wage increase aligns with the guidance and direction from the council, so I'm also very pleased that we were able to stick within those guidelines set by the council. And one thing I would like to specifically point out is we're bringing back a classification that we used to have in the Department of Police Corporals, which is a really positive thing. It gives us some opportunities to succession plan. It provides a little bit more of a career ladder for our officers. So now there's a position before being a sergeant. So this is a really positive thing for the MPA members. We're going to open that recruitment up as soon as this contract is signed, and hopefully announce the successful candidates for those, for those four positions in June. So we, we got to a contract, we're, we're pleased with that, learned a lot along the way, and are really excited to be presenting that to you tonight.
Thank you. And so, again, thanks for all that hard work on the collective bargain agreement with the police department. We'll then go ahead and move to our resolutions this evening. Our resolution number 2020-26 is a resolution. Yes?
Mayor, we need a motion to authorize the city manager to execute that contract, please.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 That motion passes unanimously six to zero.
Kylie, I just wanted to say congratulations on getting through that negotiation with a pretty happy crew, it seems like. I really appreciate how non-contemptious that was and how quickly you resolved it. So kudos to you.
Thank you. Really glad that we got there. I want, I forgot I have one other thing I wanted to mention about it. The 4% is slightly over the budget that we had in place for 2019, 2020, but we do have some salary savings in the department. We're also cutting way back on travel right now for conferences and training, so we do believe it will be a budget-neutral impact this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, that now takes us to the resolutions this evening. Resolution 2020-26 is a resolution awarding a contract for the old Sheridan Road Improvement Transportation Bond Project. That project number is 2017-6 to KNE Excavating, and so I will call on our Community Development Director, Mike Biset, to present. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet from Engineering Services Manager Larry Sherwood, as well as the proposed resolution and associated attachments related to this bid opening. The old Sheridan Road Improvements Project is the last of the capital projects that were included in the voter-approved 2014 transportation bond. It involves improving the old Sheridan Road corridor from the traffic signal at 99W to Cypress with a bridge replacement, roadway widening to accommodate bike lanes and sidewalks on both sides, as well as improved traffic signal at 99W. We received eight bids. The low bid was from KNE Excavating. Their bid was complete and deemed the lowest responsive and responsible bid. The total bid amount is $4,61,156.20. That bid includes $305,933 of work for McMinnville Water and Light to water lines and power lines in the corridor. Much like we did on Alpine and in Hill Road, we're partnering with Water and Light to have, to do some work they need done within the corridor as it's improved. I expect that the Water and Light Commission has approved or will soon approve that contract, and we'll have an intergovernmental agreement for your consideration at your next meeting. Interesting to note that the bids were real competitive, and there was about 2,000, less than $2,000 separating number one and number two on a $4 million contract, so that's pretty amazing. But unless there are any questions, staff would recommend that you approve the resolution awarding the contract to KNE Excavating.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike at this time?
Mike, did I read that right? That the winning bid that we are going to award came in about $300,000 less than the engineer's estimate in the total project in that bond ask?
That's correct. We were carrying just over $4 million for the city portion of that work, and the bid, Schedule VIII bid, which is the city portion, was a little bit less than 3.8 million. So that gives us a couple hundred thousand dollar construction contingency, which is a good thing to have when you're building an old corridor that belonged to the county and may have some unknown conditions in it. So we're in good shape from a budget standpoint for the project.
And how about all those projects rolled together? And the, the last project is, kind of sits in an unfavorable position in that it may have to pay for the sins of the previous projects, but how are we sitting overall as we culminate that bond?
We were, well, we have a little bit of paving to do associated with a sewer project that'll bid later this year, and we'll have accomplished all of the work that was contained in that bond measure on the map that showed all the projects for street paving, pedestrian improvements, and corridor improvements. We sold $24 million worth of bonds. We used SDC money, we used state money, we used urban renewal money, and we've accomplished about $36 million worth of improvements with that voter-approved measure. So it's a pretty good success story.
Good work.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you. So I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-26.
So moved.
Or second.
It's been moved by Zach and seconded by Kelly. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, signify by saying nay? Resolution 2020-26 passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to our next resolution, which is 2020-27. A resolution authorizing the approval of a cooperative fund exchange agreement between the City of McMinnville and the Oregon Department of Transportation, ODOT, and known as 2020 Fund Exchange Agreement Number 34129. This is something that we approach, I think, on an annual basis, so I'll turn it over to Mike to present.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, I'll refer you to the staff report that I've placed in the packet, as well as the proposed resolution, some background information related to fund exchange, the proposed fund exchange agreement for your consideration, as well as the project information sheet for the project that we expect to spend these funds on. So as the mayor mentioned, for a number of years, we've participated in the fund exchange program that takes our federal allotment of surface transportation block grant funds and exchanges it with the state for state funds on a 94 cents on a dollar ratio. What that does is allows us to use those funds anywhere within our transportation network, and it relieves us of the federal grant strings associated with the federal funds. For a number of, the past several years, we've been doing a small fund exchange agreement for the city share of the Newburg-Dundee bypass loan. The principal interest on that loan is $201,000 a year and change. Our allotment has been higher than that, and so we've been accruing funds and, and keeping them in the bank, if you will, in anticipation that we have some large transportation needs. Certainly, the overlay of Lafayette Avenue is one of those large projects. It's actually the first project I worked on when I started in the city in 2000. It was part of the 1998 transportation bond that the voters had passed, and we turned that state highway, which was two lanes and ditches, into an urban arterial. It's got 20-year-old pavement on it now, and needs to be repaved before we lose that pavement. The engineer's estimate for that work was 1.5 million. We're fund exchanging with the state for $1 million worth of the, of the project funds. The remainder of the funds will be city share of state highway funds that we receive on an annual basis. I'm happy to report that we had the bid opening for that project last week, and the low bid, which you will see next meeting with a resolution for a bid award, came in at about 1.3 million. So we'll have a nice construction contingency for that project as well. And it, it's overlaying from 99W all the way to 8th Street, so it'll be a significant project that'll happen sometime after July and before school starts in the fall, assuming we're starting school in the fall like we normally do. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend that you adopt the resolution as proposed, authorizing the fund exchange agreement.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike on this project? Seeing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-27.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Remy and seconded by Sal. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay? Resolution 2020-27 passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to our last resolution this evening, 2020-28. A resolution for the City of McMinnville, Oregon, extending the city's declaration of state of emergency expressed in Resolution 2020-18. I'll call on the chief to present this discussion. Chief Lippert?
Mr. Mayor and councilors, the, the emergency declaration that the, the mayor initially declared on March 16th, and then was ratified by city council, is set to expire on May 1st. And given the nature of this long-running pandemic and, and the unknowns that we're dealing with as we move into the future, this extension going indefinitely sets the city up to manage any additional costs or expenditures that it may incur as a result of the ongoing pandemic. And what it does is it sets you up for the ability to have some of those reimbursement opportunities down the road through the FEMA reimbursement programs. And at a point in time when the mayor and council decide, the, the, they can terminate the, the declaration at that point in time. I would like to thank the city clerk and her sharp eye and quick-witted, quick eye to attention and catching the fact that this was about to expire, because I absolutely missed it completely. So I want to thank Claudia for her efforts in making sure this got to council in time.
Mr. Mayor, this is Will Gell. I just wanted to add to the chief's report that on reviewing this resolution, I recommended that instead of it being done indefinitely, that it be 60 days due to the statutory requirements for a finding of duration. So it has been modified, and the, I believe you have a modified form of resolution before you.
Okay. Thank you, Walt. Appreciate that. Any questions for the chief or for Walt? Seeing none, I will take a motion for Resolution 2020-28.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Aye.
Moved by Sal, seconded by Remy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay? Resolution 2020-28 passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to the end of our, our meeting this evening. Again, I'd, I'd like to share with council and staff how well things, from my perspective, are going during this, this time of doing things differently. I, I know you're putting a lot of effort in. I know many of you are working differently at work and still do, putting effort on your, your responsibilities as councilmen and councilwomen and staff. You know, I'm, I'm going into the city hall from time to time and talking to many as I can, and, and morale seems very high. We have a hope of a return, but a safe return. Then I think some heavy lifting, lifting's going to happen as we go through the rebuilding, but this is a community that have caring people. This is a community that joins together, and I, I'm, I'm excited to see the rebounding and how well we can handle this that's coming before us. So I'll open it up to any, any last comments from any member of council or staff. council or staff. Hearing none, I will go ahead. I don't have a gavel, but I have my iPhone, so we'll go ahead and close this meeting. Thanks, all.